I love doing that. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It is now seven o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. I love that you guys are here. Oh, my goodness. So, welcome, and thank you for coming. Please help me welcome the Sims Stallions and Ms. Shawn Johnson, Principal of Sims Elementary School, to introduce our inspirational speaker. We ask that our student please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after providing the inspirational message.
Good evening, Board Chairwoman, Ms. Duncan, Ms. Brown, and Vice Chair Ms. Duncan and Dr. Oats, and the fellow board members. I am the proud principal of Sims Elementary School. And tonight, I have Joshua Miner with me, who will be providing the inspiration.
Hi, I'm Joshua Miner, and I'll be doing "Do It Anyway" by Mother Teresa. People are often unreasonable, irrational, and self-centered, but forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives, but be kind anyway. If you are successful, you will win some unfaithful friends and some genuine enemies, but succeed anyway. If you are honest and sincere, people may deceive you, but be honest and sincere anyway. What you spend years creating could be destroyed overnight, but create anyway. The good you do today will often be forgotten, but do good anyway. Give the best you have, even though it will never be enough, but give your best anyway. In the final analysis, it was never between you and them anyway.
Oh, wow. Okay, can we all remain standing for the pledge? Okay, Joshua.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Joshua. You inspired me today. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Heather.
Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries six, seven to zero. Next, we welcome the Heritage Patrias, Go Pats! And Dr. Latonya Richards, the Principal of Heritage High School, to provide the school presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Oats, Madam Chairwoman, Brown, and Vice Chairwoman Ms. Duncan and the board. Thank you for allowing this time to do a presentation. We are going to present on the implementation of Avid. This is our first year having Avid at Heritage High School, and we want to share all of the wonderful things that it has done. The board allowed for some money, some funds, to be given to implement Avid, and all of the schools took a team this summer to Florida. So, everyone knows I'm the principal that's not above a shameless plug to ask for more money. So, as you are thinking about the budget for next year, please consider sending us once more. But this is the team. We are in the implementation phase. There were eight teachers, along with an administrator and myself, that went to Florida to really learn how to effectively implement Avid, and it has really already had some positive effects. So, I have brought a team with me, Ms. Seeley, who is our coordinator and our teacher, who oversees Avid. I brought Ms. Overstreet, my assistant principal, the administrator over Avid, and several of our Heritage students to talk about Avid this evening. So, Ms. Seeley?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Brown, Vice Chair, Ms. Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oats, and the rest of the board for inviting the Avid Center to Heritage, bringing it to Heritage. A special thank you to Madam Chair, Mrs. Brown, for being the voice to bring the Avid Center to Heritage. I am grateful to Dr. Richards, Mrs. Overstreet, and the Avid team for providing support and encouragement to allow me to teach and lead the Avid Center. I would like to thank the parents and students who came out this evening to support their Avid student and the school. Can you please stand so everyone can see you? When you enter the Avid Center at Heritage High School, it is not a program, but it's an encounter with amazing students with hopes and dreams to win in life. Why Avid?
So, why Avid? We just wanted to give you some data points. As Dr. Richards says, we're already experiencing the gains of Avid. And so, I'm going to talk a little bit about our current performance of our ninth-grade students, who are Avid students. Eighty-two percent of our Avid students are on track for promotion. So, after our progress report, too, which just ended last week and grades were posted, these are students who are earning or performing and passing five or more of their classes, so they're on track for promotion. As you know, ninth grade can be a very tough year for our students as they transition from middle school to high school. And so, we want to ensure that we're providing them with the supports and interventions and programs that are going to help them experience that success. Seventy-one percent of our ninth-grade play students. And so, we did, we were very intentional on how we scheduled our students to participate in Avid. As you know, we have students who are placed in high school who didn't necessarily experience a lot of academic success in middle school. So, we wanted to have a laser-like focus on those students to ensure that they experience that success in high school, and we can get them to graduate. And so, we are happy to say that seventy-one percent of our ninth-grade students who were placed in high school are on track. They are passing five or more of their classes right now, compared to fifty-four percent of our play students from last year. So, when we didn't have Avid, we had fifty-four percent of our students, play students who were on track for promotion, but we've increased that number to seventy-one percent. So, we are very, very, very excited about that. And so, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Seeley, so that she can explain why Avid and what we're doing at Heritage.
Graduation readiness, the 2023 Graduation Readiness Report by U.S. Science. Fifty-one percent ranked family as the greatest influence on which pathway is pursued. Parent involvement is vital. Sixty-five percent having five or more fewer conversations with teachers or counselors about their post-high school opportunities. Currently, our Avid students are completing the U.S. Science Career Aptitude Assessment. Why Avid, once again? To increase the college-going culture at Heritage High School. Avid's framework is made up of four sections that correspond to the school-wide domains: instruction, systems, leadership, and culture. Culture fosters college and career preparation, common belief in student success, family and community involvement, high expectations for all, positive and safe learning environment. Not only are the students set for success, but they are also setting the culture that all students at Heritage High School will have an opportunity for college and career readiness to succeed in a global society. And once again, we're sharing with pictures what we do at Heritage to show the culture of what we do. I wanted to, before we go to instruction, I just wanted to say with the culture part, with me jumping with the students, the Avid students set social norms in the classroom regarding how students will treat each other and visitors who enter our classroom. Instruction: The expectation is set before they enter the classroom. Students must participate in their success. The Avid Center is a shared ownership space, Avid-student-centered environment. The WICER schedule helps the Avid Center stay aligned with the WICER strategies. And we have that schedule so that we, as I said, we stay in alignment, and the students know what to expect when they come into the classroom. Actually, we have Wyatt here tonight. This is an example of his letter. We have students who have written to their college of interest requesting information because we are planning to have a college day in our classroom. So, the W in WICER is for writing. This is a sample writing of one of the Avid students asking for information about UGA. Second semester, the Avid students will be pen pals with High Tower first graders. This pen pal initiative will empower Avid students to read and write. This initiative was implemented last year with Ms. Foster's class. Ms. Foster, can you just stand up so everyone can see?
Oh, okay.
So, this year, Heritage High School students, the Avid students, will be pen pals and mentors to all of the first graders at High Tower. And they will write to them and read to them as well. Avid students are learning note-taking strategies, as well as the Ninth Grade Academy. In our Ninth Grade Academy meetings, the Avid team has shared these Avid strategies with the teachers to implement in the classroom. College preparedness. Avid students learn the graduation requirements, how to calculate their GPA, the HOPE Scholarship, and they are familiar with Big Future College Board platform. We have implemented our mentoring program, and our peer leaders are, our peer leaders will be trained tutors. The peer leaders will be trained in November. So, we have two of our peer leaders here. Jada, can you stand up as well? Thank you. And we have Kendall. All right, and, oh, okay, we have reading. So, all of the Avid students, they have binders. Also, I received a grant from Page to purchase books to expand the classroom library. My reading initiative is Stay Lit for Literacy to motivate students. We read as a group, and I read with the students in the classroom. And our Lexile range for our classroom library, it starts from eight-twenty over the one-thousand. And some of our books are high-interest books, and those students who may be struggling with reading, to support them. So, I found out that when you're reading with a group, as a group, the students are more engaged. So, we're starting to implement that with all of the classes, but I already have started with one. And the book that we are reading is called "The Young Landlords."
Okay.
And now, we are going to have our Avid students to speak. We are going to start with Kendall. She is a peer leader, and then, after that.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Oats, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kendall Nimmens. I'm a senior at Heritage High School, a third-year peer leader, and a peer mentor and educator to a freshman named Chloe Rivers. Chloe is a part of the Avid program. Avid stands for Advancement via Individual Determination. I am blessed to be able to share my leadership skills with underclassmen like Chloe through tutoring, student-led activities, and everyday mentoring. Here to share her Avid experience is Chloe.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Brown, Vice Chair, Ms. Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oats, and the rest of the board and guests. My name is Chloe Rivers, and I would like to share my experience in Avid. My Avid journey started at Caris Middle School. I wanted to continue my Avid journey into high school because of the collaborations we would collaborate and plan activities to do within schools, participate in student-led tutorials and subjects we needed additional support. Avid is like a family. We are honest with our Avid sisters and brothers, and we would correct each other by saying that wasn't Avid-like. One activity we planned was a sponsored dance to raise money to go on a tour and attend a game at Georgia Tech. After that tour, I began thinking more about going to college. If I was to go to college, I would like to attend Emory University or Southern University. When I found out that Avid was going to Heritage, I became excited and wanted to, I was happy that I was able to continue my journey and regulate the program. I am thankful for the Avid program, former teacher Ms. Sonia Lewis and Ms. John at Caris Middle School, and to my current mentor Kendall and my current Avid teacher, Ms. Seeley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Brown, Vice Chair, Ms. Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oats, the rest of the board and guests. My name is Heaven McCray, and I am a part of the Avid program. What Avid means to me is college readiness and a pathway to a successful career. I would like to major in computer science and econology with a full ride scholarship to South Carolina State University. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Brown, Vice Chair, Ms. Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oats, the rest of the board and guests. My name is Jordan Williams, and I am an Avid student. Avid means to me college readiness. In class, we learned to calculate GPA and search for colleges on Big Future College Board. Michigan State, Columbus State, and Alabama State are the colleges I researched. I am interested in majoring in graphic design or becoming an audio film tech. One of our class assignments was writing a letter to my college of interest to request a pennant and information for our college day event coming up in the near future. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you this evening.
Good afternoon, Dr. Oats, Ms. Brown, and Ms. Duncan, other board members and guests. My name is Isis Akbar, and I'm an Avid student, and we are stronger together. Stronger stands for social, teamwork, responsible, outstanding, nice, great, excellent, reliable, together. When I graduate, I would like to attend FAMU, which is an HBCU in Tallahassee, Florida. I would like to major in dance and play in the marching band. Thank you.
Thank you once again, and we want to end the slide with our Avid induction ceremony that we had, and we just wanted to share some of the pictures. And we really appreciate this opportunity, and we are excited about where Avid is going at Heritage High School. Thank you.
Go Pats! I love your presentation. Thank you so much. Thank you, students, for presenting and sharing with us your experiences. Next, Cindy Ball, Chief of Strategy and Innovation, will recognize our staff and students. Dr. Oats? Vice Chair Duncan, would you please join Dr. Oats and I?
And while you're making your way down, I just want to comment on our RCPS Wears Pink today. Our healthcare partner Piedmont Rockdale, a while back, asked us to participate in the community-wide Wear Pink, which was designated for during our fall break. And so, we chose today to be our RCPS Wears Pink in participation with the community-wide effort that happened during our fall break. So, today, I just want to say thank you to all of the RCPS employees who wore pink. We are one of the largest employers in Rockdale County, and eighty percent women. So, I do want to also give you the message of early detection, and we do have some shower cards on the back table for you to take on your way out from Piedmont Rockdale. And so, we appreciate their partnership, and certainly, we are very glad to have our survivor, Ms. Brown, right here with us in our room, but also... But I also want to give a shout out to all of the survivors in Rockdale County Public Schools and those who may be faced with breast cancer currently. So, we're pulling for everybody. So, with that, I will move on to our first group. Small group, yes. Small but mighty. Our first group, we will recognize for a Presidential Achievement. They are state winners in the Jimmy Carter Postcard Contest. This year's theme was Peanuts, Politics, and Peace. We had over one hundred and fifty entries from Davis Middle School visual arts students alone in this contest. These students were recognized at the Peanut Festival in Plains, Georgia recently, where the former president and first lady made a surprise appearance. They received a certificate and a medal from the staff at the Jimmy Carter National Historical Park and marched in the parade with other state winners. Artwork will become permanent pieces in the exhibit at the Jimmy Carter National Historic Park and will be on their website. Students, when I call your name, if you will come up front to get your certificate, and our guests in the audience, if I will direct your attention to our screens, you should be able to see their artwork when they come up. First, we have winning third place for sixth grade. Congratulations to Jason Morris. And winning second place for seventh grade, congratulations to Aleda Ponce Hernandez. And this is our group. Parents, you're welcome to come up behind me and take pictures and... And you will also see all of our pictures taken tonight on our social media as well. But feel free to come up behind me and take pictures. I'll move. And our proud art teacher, come on. And if you didn't see, I'll take a moment to give another plug for our Davis Middle School art students. On the table on the way in, we have pumpkins that are made from our students. So, happy fall to everybody, and please take one home. Congratulations. Our next group of students are winners in the Rockdale Soil and Water Conservation District Poster and Photo Contest. Through education, assistance, and oversight, the Rockdale Soil and Water Conservation District helps to maintain the soil and water resources for Rockdale County. They are part of the larger Georgia Association of Conservation Districts, which works to promote conservation in cooperation with partner agencies, educate citizens about the importance of conservation, and inform policymakers about natural resource issues. Their mission is to advocate for the conservation of Georgia's natural resources by providing organization, leadership, and a unified strategic direction to the conservation districts throughout the state. This year's poster contest, called One Water, and photo contest, called Conservation Practices, featured categories for kindergarten through fifth grades, sixth through eighth grades, and ninth through twelfth grades. Students are given a certificate and a monetary award for their winning artwork. So, students, when you come up this evening, you'll get two certificates, and inside the blue folder will also be your monetary award. So, make sure that does not drop out of your folder. We also have with us here this evening Mr. George Kelchek, who is the Director of the Rockdale Soil and Water Conservation District. We would like to thank him and his team for giving our students this opportunity and for the work that they do in our community. And when we do our photo, we'll ask Mr. Kelchek to join us for the photo. First, we will begin by recognizing our students. Winning first place in the sixth through eighth grade poster contest and winning fifty dollars, Kaylee Williams. Winning second place in the sixth through eighth grade poster contest, Cara Bids. And that was a thirty-dollar award. And our next student couldn't be here with us this evening, but we will recognize her. Tina Nguyen won third place in the sixth through eighth grade poster contest, winning a twenty-dollar award. Our next student won both second and third place in the sixth through eighth grades photo contest, Sienna Summer. And our final student won first, second, and third places in the ninth through twelfth grade photo contest, Elena Snead. And Mr. Kelchek, if you would like to join us for the photo? Come on up. Congratulations. Our next group is a large group, and so, I'm going to ask our Director of Professional Learning, Mr. Mike Moriello, to come up and help us with our Real Academy certificates. Yes, this is a big group. So, let's see. The Office of Professional Learning and Superintendent Dr. Terry Hoods are proud to recognize the following individuals for their successful completion of the 2022-23 Rockdale Educational Academy for Leadership. This year-long program included a variety of leadership experiences and assignments, including monthly leadership seminars, TEACs and LEAKs credentialing, leadership book studies, attending two boardwork sessions, job shadowing, leading professional learning and stakeholder engagement, participating in the district job fair, completing a GEL standards portfolio, and completing a year-long action research project. We are going to begin tonight by recognizing the ASPIRE group. The ASPIRE cohort is designed to provide support and to afford an understanding for the challenges of leadership roles and responsibilities at the school and district levels. First, from Memorial Middle School, we have Dr. Gina Beasley. Our next graduate of ASPIRE was promoted to Assistant Principal at Rockdale County High School in July 2023, Jermaine Blakely. And our next graduate promoted to Assistant Principal at Peaks Chapel Elementary in July 2023, Haydi Daniel Knight. From Honey Creek Elementary School, Dr. Shari Miller. From Conyers Middle School, Brandy Norwood McKibben. Also from Conyers Middle School, Chris Tucker. From Salem High School, Shalonda Walker. And from Heritage High School, Keisha Williams. And if I didn't mention it earlier, ASPIRE stands for Additional Support for Professionals Inspired to Reach Excellence. This is our ASPIRE group. Do you want me to stack this group, or are you okay? Congratulations. And now the ASPIRE 2.0 cohort, which is designed to provide support and assistance for induction-level assistant principals. All ready? Our first graduate, Dr. Lynette Clark from Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. From Conyers Middle School, Anthony Crowell. Also from Conyers Middle School, Dr. Shawana Green. From Honey Creek Elementary School, Dr. LaSanne Geiton. From Rockdale Virtual Campus, Melanie Houli. From Flat Shoals Elementary School, Keela Jones. From Rockdale County High School, Enya Solomon. And our final graduate began in the ASPIRE program and was promoted to Assistant Principal at CJ Hicks in January of 2023, Sheri Waddell. And that is our group? Thank you. Congratulations. Our next group is the LEED cohort. LEED stands for Leadership Enhancement and Development. The LEED cohort is designed to prepare assistant principals and select central office personnel for the rigors of the principal position or a director position. First, from Flat Shoals Elementary School and our District Teacher of the Year, Dr. Kristy Davis Langston. From the Office of Professional Learning, Ursula Maddox-Davis. Our final graduate in this group was promoted to Curriculum and Instruction Coordinator for Science, Health, and Physical Education in July of 2023, Dr. Bonza Phillips. That looks so good. Congratulations. That concludes our recognitions.
Congratulations, everyone, and thank you for coming to celebrate our recipients. And at this time, the board will take a recess so that we can greet everyone, and then we will take about two minutes.
Testing. Could we have our board members come down front and center for a quick Breast Cancer Awareness Month picture? Our board members center in front of the podium the day is here?
Ask me what time it is. It is now 7:46. The Rockdale County Board of Education meeting is called back to order. The time is now 7:46, and I would like to call the meeting back to order, please. We do have a few visitors today. This is the time when we allow our citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter, or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or engaging in behavior that disrupts the decorum of this meeting. This time, I would like to welcome Mr. George Kelchek. Please come forward.
Rockdale County, there we go. Just a couple of public service announcements. The Rockdale Soil and Water Conservation District is one of 40 conservation districts across the state. And we are under the jurisdiction of the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission. And we're going to be holding two really, really nice events for students and parents over the next few months, and I wanted to alert y'all to these and provide you some information. The, looking at the agribusiness world, it's a $73 billion industry here in the state of Georgia. It's the largest. It employs one out of seven people in the state of Georgia. Recently, the USDA just announced if you have 1/100 of an acre, and you are growing fruits and vegetables and providing them for sale, you can get funding through USDA. So that's 426 square feet, 20 by 30. I've come to know that kids that are on a pathway in their curriculum certainly graduate at a higher level rate. And so the two programs that we have put together are going to develop additional pathways in the agribusiness and soil and water world. One being, in June of next year, the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission holds a week-long agribusiness workshop where students, they go to ABAC for $300 for a week, college food, college dorms, gets them ready for the agribusiness world. And it shows them that you don't have to wear bib overalls and drive a tractor to be in agribusiness. And secondly, what we're doing is, in April 20th of next year, at the Rockdale Career Academy, in April twentieth of next year, at the Rockdale Career Academy on a Saturday morning, we're going to hold the first agribusiness soil water expo in the state of Georgia. We plan on having over five hundred students from Gwinnett, Walton, Newton, and Rockdale County. And I'll provide you a list of all of the different agencies and businesses and commodity commissions we already have invited. So it's going to be a great time in 2024 for, for Rockdale County. So I want to congratulate all the students, parents, this board, eighty-seven percent graduation rate. I'd like to see it get to a hundred. And I'll tell you why. From the information from the National Center of Education Statistics, NCES, relative to individuals who complete grad, high school graduation, the average high school dropout
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Costs the economy two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Kellacek. Thank you. Our next visitor that would like to respond to the board is Brian Williams, Senior. Would you please come forward? He's not here. Okay. All right, our next visitor is Shawna Nixon. Would you please come forward? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Chair, Ms. Duncan, Dr. Oats, and the rest of the board, friends and visitors. I wanted to come to thank you, the board members, on behalf of the parent. The Parent PAC was formed way back then at Sims Elementary School. We were a group of parents determined to get the best education for our children here in Rockdale County. And although our children have matriculated and are matriculating through the Rockdale County School System by graduating, we just want everyone to know that the Parent PAC is alive and well. We are here in present, and we will always be here to support our board. Yes, our high school rate has gone to eighty-seven percent. It was sixty. I'm thankful for the progress because my children are part of that eighty-seven percent, and I thank you for it. Rome wasn't built in a day, but we're building it, and I know we'll get there. I would also like to thank our chairwoman, Ms. Pamela J. Brown. We are so thankful to have you here in our county. You are a fighter for our children, for what's right. We don't always agree. Lord knows we've had our moments. But I'm always assured that what you do is for the good of not just one or two children in the county, but for the children as a whole of the district. And on behalf of the Parent PAC, and I have a couple of parents here as well tonight, we just want to present you with a bouquet of pink to celebrate you and your survivorship of cancer. We know that you have fought that fight multiple times, and we are grateful that God has blessed you with the strength, with the courage, and with the tenacity to fight that fight successfully, and that you're still here leading our county along with Dr. Oats, our vice chair, and the rest of the board. So on behalf of the Parent PAC, we thank you.
Okay, our next visitor, Stacy Edwards, would you please come forward? Welcome.
Hi, Board. I guess I want to say I'm a part of the Parent PAC as well. Thank you, Board, for the great job that you all have done. My daughter graduated from Heritage High School, twenty-twenty-one. I still want to be considered as part of the Parent PAC. And I want to give special thanks to Pam Brown and Rosie Hardaway. As Rosie Hardaway was one of my daughter's teachers at RCA, and Rosie introduced Pam to me and my family due to my daughter graduated twenty, class of twenty-twenty-one, but she was diagnosed with lymphoma cancer, twenty-twenty-one. She's an outstanding student, honor student, cheer captain of basketball, football, and part of the the dance academy at Heritage High School. And unfortunately, she was diagnosed with lymphoma cancer her senior year of high school. So that's one of the part of the reason why I'm here today as part of the Parent PAC is to celebrate the cancer survivors. And she's definitely a survivor. And I just want to give special thanks to Rosie and Ms. Brown because, of course, she was diagnosed twenty-twenty-one in February, and she was a senior, and she was supposed to graduate March with her class in May. But unfortunately, she wasn't able to because she was diagnosed with cancer. And not only diagnosed with cancer in February, she also ended up on life support and wasn't sure if she was going to make it or not. And through her hard struggle and fight to make sure that she just would got grace and glory. I just want to say that first. With his grace and mercy on, on her and my family, she made it. But she came out of rehab on the day of graduation, which was, I believe it was May twenty-eighth, and, and graduated cum laude. And I just want to share a little bit with, about her story because this also impacted Pam Brown and Hardaway impacted our life so heavily for this because I remember Deja, when she first walked into Heritage High School, ninth grade year, she said, Mama, I want to make you proud. She was like, I want to graduate. When I walk across that stage my senior year, I want to have on all kind of ropes for, for honors.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm going to have to end you. Your time is up. Sorry.
Okay.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Oats.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, and to our Vice Chairwoman and our board members and cabinet members as well. At this time, we're going to have our Chief Student Support Services Officer, Dr. Delphine Smith-Dixon, come up and present on an important action item that I had shared with the board in last week's board brief. Thank you, Dr. Smith-Dixon.
This is board, and thank you for this opportunity to share this information, and certainly a hard act to follow. But this evening, I wanted to bring something to your attention that we are seeking your action. In June of 2023, you may recall that you took action on approving a new contract with the Steppenstone's Group. The Steppenstone's Group provides Rockdale County Public Schools with eleven speech-language pathologists. And so the sum of that contract was approved for more than one point, seven million dollars. And so we actually had eleven SLPs about the latter part of August. One of the eleven SLPs resigned from the school district, and so we are definitely experiencing the same shortages that everyone else is throughout the country. And so we have diligently tried to replace that particular position. And we finally have a new speech-language pathologist who is willing to come on board with the Steppenstone's Group. However, the new speech-language pathologist rate is different than the rate that was approved in the item this summer, which is what is bringing me back to you. So the original rate approved was seventy dollars an hour for each SLP. The rate for this SLP is seventy-two dollars an hour. So while there is a difference in the rate of pay, there is not additional monies that would be added to the contract. Obviously, with the gap in service, it will not require additional funding. However, since the original contract was approved by the board, then the addendum would have to be approved by the board. And so if you take action on this item, the speech-language pathologist will begin to provide services for our students, about forty-seven students in one of our elementary schools by the end of this month. And so the request for today is that the superintendent recommends the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a contract addendum for the Steppenstone's Group, LLC, as a private provider for speech-language services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities. The rationale for this is that they are a private provider that has provided eleven a speech-language pathologist for Rockdale County Public Schools. We're bringing the addendum because of the need to recruit and replace a speech-language pathologist who's no longer with us, and there is no different financial impact for this addendum. Are there any questions?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. We have our chief financial officer coming up, and we have also some special presenters to you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Vice Chairwoman, Dr. Oats, members of the board. I'll be going over the final financial numbers for the month of September. All right, the revenue for September was nine point seven million. The revenue year-to-date was twenty-eight point two million, which is fourteen point one percent of our budget. Last September, we received nine point two million, twenty-six point six billion year-to-date, which is fourteen point seven percent of our budget. Expenditures for the month of September is eighteen million, fifty-one million year-to-date, which is twenty-four point nine percent of our budget. Last September, we are fifteen point eight million expended, forty-five point one million year-to-date, which is twenty-four point five percent of our budget. Our outstanding encumbrances are two million, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and seven, two million, seven hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. Our fund balance for the end of September is approximately thirteen point five million. Last September, we are twenty point one million. Assets thirteen point five, all liabilities cleared, and our fund balance at thirteen point five. Our SPOS five at the end of September, SPOS five collections are ongoing and will complete it in October. I do expect to get a check this month, and that will do us for SPOS five. The collection rate is currently one hundred and twenty-two percent. Revenue received is one hundred and two point seven million, expenses eighty-two point four million, and the current balance is twenty point three million in SPOS five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman and Vice Chairwoman and our board members and executive cabinet, we do have our president and CEO, the Conyers-Rockdale Economic Development Council, Mr. Kevin Hanna, and Ms. Brasswell, the VP, here to bring us enterprises of a prospective project, economic development project. And so he's going to give some detailed information. Mr. Hanna.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Vice Chairwoman, and Superintendent, all the board members. As Superintendent said, I am Kevin Hanna. I'm the president of the Conyers-Rockdale Economic Development Council, otherwise known as CRETCI. I asked Dr. Oats for this opportunity to present to you all because there is a, there's a large project that is slated to come to Conyers-Rockdale, which will have a substantial economic impact for all of us, but for the school board in particular. And I wanted to share this information with you before we got too much further down the road. Hope I'm doing this right. There we go. The, the company that's coming is a developer of data centers. I'm not going to bore you by going through all of these bullet points, but there are a couple of things I do want to kind of highlight. The first is the fact that a data center essentially is a physical location that stores computing machines and related equipment. Essentially, it's a physical facility that stores any company's digital information. Data centers of late, over the past couple of years, have become hot items. They are physical buildings of anywhere from a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, and all they do is store data, digital data. DC Blocks is a developer of data centers around the country. They have developed Dallas data centers all over the southeast, specifically in Greenville, South Carolina, Birmingham, Huntsville, Chattanooga, and in Atlanta. Well, more specifically, in Douglasville on the west side of, of Atlanta. DC Blocks is looking to establish an east-side core for data centers. What they plan to do is develop four, up to four, data centers in Conyers-Rockdale. Couple of things about data centers. This is kind of a generic drawing version of a data center. This is a little better view of the elevation. First thing I want to, I want to talk about is the fact that those things coming out of the sides of the data centers, those are not trucks. They are not trucks. Those are power centers essentially that provide the power for the building to store the data. Earlier this year, we held a couple of community meetings, and one of the, certainly one of the biggest concerns for those community folks was the fact that they did not want the roads or the infrastructure to be negatively affected by this new concept of a data center. They will not. Data centers bring in absolutely no trucks. They employ somewhere between six and ten people per data center. So there's not going to be any kind of demand, excess demand on your resources or on, well, much of any other resources. What data centers do draw upon, though, is power. They need a lot of electricity to power what they do. DC Blocks is building what is essentially a data highway from Myrtle Beach to Douglasville. This map outlines where they plan to build data centers between here and Myrtle Beach. In fact, the Myrtle Beach site ribbon cutting was held last week. I was invited to it, went to it. It's a wonderful thing. The data center, I took a tour of it. It sits right in the middle, I kid you not, right in the middle of a brand-new mixed-income Atlantic station-type development. There were, there are houses popping up all over the place around the data center. There are retail establishments, restaurants, literally within walking distance of the data center because these things really present no real issue or problem for neighborhoods. By the way, I mentioned the community meetings that, that we held in anticipation of this particular data center. The community wholeheartedly supported the construction and the development of these data centers in their neighborhood. This is a community which had before rejected more residential development because they saw it as a draw, additional draw on certain limited resources like roads, like sewer, and like schools. The other thing about this particular data center is that they will cut a new sewer line. Right now, those neighborhoods are on septic. They have agreed to allow those neighborhoods to cut into or link into their sewer lines once it's cut. So the, from the neighborhood standpoint, it's a win-win-win situation. Again, I'm not going to go through this in much detail, but this is the, essentially the deal that's being proposed by DC Blocks. The buildings will cost somewhere around between three hundred and fifty and four hundred million. between three hundred and fifty and four hundred million dollars per building. They are looking to build four data centers, up to four data centers, obviously one at a time, and one that averages out to one every two and a half years or so. In addition to the three hundred and eighty-seven million dollars to construct the building, each data center will likely see about a one hundred and eighty million dollar investment in equipment. So you can see that the investment here is pretty substantial. All total, the estimate is for, well, four buildings at three hundred and eighty-seven million dollars is well over a billion dollars in investment once all of the data centers are constructed. This is probably the most important, one of the most important slides in the group. This is, and I don't know if you can really see those numbers. I wish there was a way for me to kind of enlarge them. But this is an analysis of, this is our estimate of the taxes, property taxes, that will annue to the school board. We are asking that the school board and the county, it's not located in the city, so they're not involved, but we're asking for the county and the school board to buy into a tax abatement for the data centers. Right now, just to give you an idea, right now, the site that they've identified is raw land. That raw land pays somewhere around two thousand dollars per year in property taxes. You're not going to look to lose a whole lot by developing the data center. In fact, again, I'll leave this with you all and hopefully make copies of it for you. But what that chart shows is that the first year, it's a ten-year abatement is what's being proposed. In the first year, the, the property tax dollars that will annue to Rockdale County Public Schools is three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. In the third year, that grows up to seven hundred and seven thousand. By the fourth year, you're at, well, over, just over a million dollars, and you increase by about three hundred to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year on through the tenth year. In the tenth year, when they are paying full bore, so to speak, the annual property tax collection just to the school board is three million, estimated at three point one million dollars per year. That's property taxes for the building. As far as the equipment is concerned, remember that I said that the investment would be well over a hundred million dollars in equipment. The estimates here are for one hundred and thirty-five million dollars. So with the assumption that a hundred and thirty-five million dollars of equipment investment will be made in the first year of the abatement, the Rockdale County Public Schools will collect one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, a little bit over a hundred and thirty-five thousand. That increases by about a hundred and thirty thousand, well, in the second year. The collection of property taxes for personal equipment is going to be different from real estate because the personal equipment depreciates in value. And so when you have a depreciating, I should know this because I graduated from high school, numerator or denominator, and you're applying a certain millage rate, your, the amount earned is going to go down. So it goes from six hundred, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the first year, two hundred and sixty-four thousand in the second year, then down to two twenty-eight, down to ninety-eight, and ends at a hundred and twenty-two thousand. After the fifth year, school board will, well, after the fifth year, typically, the equipment is swapped out. It typically becomes, you can't use it anymore. Not only does it sometimes burn out, new technology comes about, and data centers have a habit of swapping out equipment at least every five, if not every four years. So in the, in the sixth year, new equipment is bought in, the abatement goes away, and the school board earns full bore starting year one on the new set of equipment. Last thing, last slide. In addition to property taxes, there are other taxes that will be collected, specifically having to do with the electricity that's being drawn. Recall that I said that data centers draw a lot of electricity. Well, host tax, ELOS, and SPOS taxes are collected on that. And these are our estimates, both of the, the amount of, based on a given amount of electricity that's drawn, typically drawn by a data center of the size that we're talking about. The annual host tax is roughly eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. ELOS will be its, an identical amount, and SPOS will also see about a hundred, I'm sorry, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars per year once the data centers are up. Now, that is per data center. The hope is to do four of them. Again, they'll do one at a time, developing a data center once every two, two and a half years or so. But once everything is invested, everything is completed, it'll come out to somewhere north of a billion dollars in data centers. This is by far, so far, the largest single development in Rockdale County history. And one of the reasons that they chose, two reasons that they chose to come to Rockdale, one is the location, the fact that, like I said, they want to build that, that, that line of data centers from Myrtle Beach through Atlanta, and they want us to be their east hub, so to speak. But the other reason is the hope, the expectation that we would, in fact, abate taxes pursuant to that ten-year schedule. We were in competition with DeKalb County and Henry County. As a result of our incentive program, they decided to do it with us as opposed to actually came down to us and DeKalb County. We were chosen over DeKalb County because of the incentive program. And with that, I know that's a lot of information. Again, I'll leave these with you all to go over, but I welcome your questions, your comments, whether now or in the future. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. It is, it is on Farmer Road, about half a mile from Yellowwood. It's, it's along, it's along Farmer Road and Lester Road. There are seventy, roughly seventy-three acres. The site, in fact, is kind of bifurcated, cut in half by large Georgia power lines. I should have brought a map, I'm sorry, but it is, along Farmer and Lester are the two major roads that kind of enclose it. The neighborhood, and forgive me for forgetting that, but the neighborhood that's nearby is a neighborhood of very large, single-family residences. That was the neighborhood who came out in favor of the data centers.
Stan, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the, the tax savings that this company would enjoy, I mean, that represents a lot of dollars that could ease some of the tax burden on citizens for a building that is largely unoccupied, but is, it sounds like it's a lot of strain on our, on our electric grid. My question becomes, how does this incentive program compare to DeKalb County? Because this is a lot of tax revenue that is, that we are potentially taking away from the students of Rockdale County and putting that tax burden on people who live here.
See, and, and I look at it differently. We're not, right now, we're collecting, like I said, less than twenty-five hundred dollars a year on that property. And if nothing gets built, we will continue to collect less than twenty-five hundred dollars per year on that property. You are absolutely right. DC Blocks and the data center will enjoy a tax break. But the benefit to Rockdale County is huge, and it wouldn't be there if it didn't get built. So I, I disagree to some extent that it's, it's taking money away from Rockdale County schools or, or the county, because right now, we're collecting twenty-five hundred dollars a year on it, and that's going to change literally the year after this gets built.
But my question was, do we, do you have any idea what the incentive program for DeKalb County was versus extending?
No. I, I did not. And typically, counties don't kind of share that kind of information while they're competing with one another. I can find out now that they've pretty much decided in Rockdale, but up until now, that information has not been available, at least not to us.
Sure. And I get, I fully understand your argument that right now, that is not a income-bearing property for either the county or the school board. My concern is, I don't want to over-incentivize a company that when, when this money could come into the general fund, and that could be accounted for in the millage rate, and try to get some tax abatement for people, for citizens of Rockdale County that are continuously complaining about the amount of taxes that they're paying. This could be, this type of development could be a true benefit for tax abatement to the folks of Rockdale County. That's, that's the only reason why I'm asking the question.
Stan.
Thank you.
But I commit to, I will try to find out what DeKalb was, was offering.
I appreciate it.
Kevin, are the number of years set in place? You have ten years. Is it, is it negotiable or you guys have passed that?
No, they, they wanted more than ten. Ten, ten was the negotiated number for the real estate. They also wanted ten years for the equipment. That number got brought down to five, mostly for the, the reason I said, the fact-
Because of the liability versus-
Well, yeah, the, the use, the estimated useful life of the equipment is less than ten years.
I meant liability in terms of asset and liability. After five years in a business, they're going to change that out because it becomes a liability. And second question is, as you leave your documents with us, will you be able to leave us how we can contact you? Because you said it is a lot of information, and I'd like to process it. So do we reach out to you via Dr. Oates, or will you leave your contact information for the board as well?
You tell me how, how best to leave it. I can leave it with one of the staff members or through Dr. Oates.
Okay. I certainly want to look at it a little bit more. And so, yes.
Surely.
Thank you for the hard work.
For you. And let me publicly say, too, thank you to Ms. Brown, who serves on the CRETCE board, who has served on the CRETCE board for as long as I've been, and has been a great supporter of, well, me personally and CRETCE in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
My quick question was, you had said that one of the reasons that they went ahead and chose Rockdale was because of the incentives. So is that a done deal, that it's coming to Rockdale, even though we as a board haven't voted on this? Or is this something we as a board will need to approve, similar to the thing?
Feel free to address. Well, they don't ask you.
Okay, that's what my question was. If this is something-
Both of the bait.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. That clears. I know the, the other thing, we had to approve that, and that's what I was wondering if that-
And let me just say this, and I know Keith would agree with me. We're very appreciative of Kevin for, he has consistently come to us when these types of conversations were taking place. And I know that hasn't always been the case, Keith, in the past. So we're very appreciative of that.
I appreciate the information. I'm on the same page with you, that we'd rather see money down the road than two thousand, twenty-five hundred a year. So it will help our taxpayers, and I appreciate you bringing that business to our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, little woman, but that large neighborhood that you mentioned, can you provide that name to us?
I, I cannot remember it now. It's-
But you could give it.
Yes, yes, we will. I will, absolutely. That could probably come to me on my way, on my drive home. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings in the month of September. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the board meetings held in September?
So moved.
Janie Jones.
Second, Heather.
All right. A motion has been made by Ms. Jones and second by Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. You abstain? Okay. All right. Six, two, one. One is abstaining. Right. Okay. There is no old business, but there is, oh, okay.
All right.
Well, Dr. Oates have a few updates?
Yes, very briefly. I just got from the Fall Bootstrap Conference. That's one of GSSA's annual major conferences. Governor Kemp addressed the, the conferees. It was a very informative conference as well. Another thing that, there were a lot of updates provided by the Georgia Department of Education departments. And, and one big thing that I'll be speaking about in the weeks ahead with the board is that there was a pending amendment to the Elementary Secondary Education Act plan that GADOE had put before the United States Department of Education. I think one of the items in that plan that was of most interest to us was they had proposed that they, that formerly the U.S. Department of Education adopt the amendment that GADOE put forth that says that there will only be, there will be no single summative score published for CCRPI, but it would be at the indicator levels only. And that was approved. But that was one of, they approved essentially all of the, the information or the amendments that were requested. And there will be more information forthcoming to the board. I actually shared the plan, a summary of the changes and the amendments with the board in the forthcoming board brief, but that was very big information. Also, someone was talking, one of the avid students earlier was talking about their aspirations for college. You guys may be familiar with Georgia Match that Governor Kemp unveiled, which they sent out last week to a ton of seniors, a list of colleges that they, I see Miss Hardaway with nodding affirmatively, she's familiar with this, list of colleges that they're eligible to attend. And because a lot of students, they think that they're not able to attend any type of post-secondary, but they did this. And this, this streamlines the, the admissions and search process, and it also direct informs them of, of funding, grant funding and other funding that is cost-neutral to them to attend certain technical college system of Georgia institutions, but also USG institutions as well. So we're very excited. They did talk about that. So it was a very instructive conference. The only other thing I'll share is that today, I wrapped up my three student advisory councils with middle school today, and I had done high school last week and elementary a couple of weeks ago. The focus of this initial advisory was to get their perspectives and feedback on how the first half of first semester has gone. And it was very instructive advisement from the students, very positive overall, but some very constructive advisement and feedback as well. That's all I have, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Dr. Oates. There is no old business, but there is new business. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract addendum for the Steppenstone's Group LLC as a private provider for speech language services as outlined in the individualized education program for student disabilities? Is there a second, a first? Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay. All right. A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and a second by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries seven to zero. Last week, the cabinet provided an extensive overview of all action items, and the board voted to place the action items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda?
So moved.
Nice second.
Thank you. A motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda, one through eleven, I believe, okay, has been made by Ms. Palmer and second by Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries seven to zero. At this time, we are, on the schedule, we do have, on the agenda, we have an executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel?
So moved.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries seven to zero. Eight twenty-nine, we're in executive session.
You guys will be in the PL room, by the way. PL room. You guys will be in the PL room, by the way. PL room.
It is 9:56 and we are out of executive session, back into our regular session. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
So moved.
I need a second, okay. Ms. Duncan, a motion has been made by Ms. Duncan to conclude the meeting and second by Ms. Palmer. All in favor? Motion carries. Meeting is over.